Regarding Administrative Hearing Agreement 201-706-1033. In closed session, the Board did not approve the agreement. The motion was made by Diane Gibson-Grey and seconded by Deborah Vincent. The motion carried by a 3-0 vote. I would now like to open the session. And if we could take quorum.
Good evening. Board Member Crystal Sawyer White.
Present.
Board Member Gary Hack, he's on vacation. Board Member Diane Gibson-Grey.
Here.
Board Vice President Deborah Vincent.
Present.
Board President Walter Rulick.
Present. If we could have the flag salute and be led by trustee Crystal White.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to approval of Board Minutes for the meeting of tonight. Of September 13th, first. Okay. Approval of the September 13th Board Minutes. Oh, here it is, I got it.
I was going to say, go ahead and approve. I noticed at the beginning of the minutes, there weren't a whole lot of entries, but toward the end of the minute, you had quite a few entries. So, I don't know what the format is, but I do know we have an audio that matches the meeting. So, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't believe so. Motion carries to approve Minutes of September 13th. Superintendent reports.
Yes, I just want to start out by congratulating Deer Valley High School Special Education Teacher, Mr. Robert Hubbard. He's also the Deer Valley Football Coach. He was nominated for the lifetime, I want to say it right, Life Changer of the Year Award, and it recognizes and rewards the very best K-12 educators and school employees across the United States who are making a difference in the lives of students. So, congratulations to him. For those of you who've met Mr. Hubbard, he's just such a genuine, kind human being that it's twice as gratifying to see him receiving this award. And I just want to say, last week, we had our federal program monitoring, and that's quite intensive. This is happening across districts throughout California, and it involves a team of 12 reviewers from the California Department of Education. They spent five days in our schools, at the district office, reviewing our policies, procedures, and programs, and I'm happy to report that they were overwhelmingly positive about what they were seeing happening in our classroom and at our schools, and just very complimentary. So, just thanks to staff who participated in that, to the schools. They went to Turner Elementary, Antioch Middle School, and also Antioch High School, and just had glowing things to say about all three schools, so, just great. And then I want to, this is going to be a hard part. Great. So, this past week, we had two staff members pass away, so, I was just hoping we could observe a moment of silence. Thank you. I meant to be much more articulate, but obviously, we wished our families peace at this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Brings us to student delegate reports. Who will be the first to speak tonight?
I'll go first.
Okay. Thank you for volunteering.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Clarissa Wilson, and I am here representing Antioch High School. Some of the activities on campus that we have had so far include an on-campus voter registration for our students who are eligible to vote. That was provided by the Social Science Department. We had our back-to-school rally on September 15th with a link crew tellgater after school for our freshmen as a pre-celebration of the football game that night. We had our first Panther pantry last Friday, where we served a few hundred students and families in need with groceries. For student achievement, seven of our 11th grade students were selected to participate in a summer paid internship with the Biotech Partners Program, where they worked at various biotech industries during the summer. We hosted the college fair a few weeks back in our big gym, where a lot of students with their families came and got tons of information from various universities. Some of our students also attended the HBCU College Fair. Two of our students specifically, Erin Grimes, who was a senior, and I, Clarissa Wilson, a junior, received full ride scholarships, following a lot of our other classmates who received partial scholarships. On August 5th, as a representative of the Lead Academy, I hosted a back-to-school stuff-the-bust giveaway, which serviced, which served over 4,000 students throughout the district. Ananda Brooks, a graduate of last year in the Environmental Academy, received the highest level award from the Globe Western States Science Symposium that was held at NASA Jet Propulsion Lab, where she was offered a job upon graduation. She was accepted into UC Santa Cruz, where she now studies. We hosted our first-ever Club Rush, where all our clubs on campus set up informational booths in order to gain members. Linked Learning teachers are currently working on developing integrative projects, as well as senior projects, and more information will be provided next meeting. As the Secretary of PTSA, we had our back-to-school meeting on September 14th, welcoming all new members and returning members to school. Homecoming week is soon approaching. On October 13th, we will have a homecoming breakfast at Lone Tree Golf and Event Center at 7:30 a.m. for our six candidates, as well as some staff members, district personnel, and the student government class. Following that, we will have two rallies and a homecoming game versus Freedom High School at 7:00 p.m., where the homecoming queen will be announced. We now offer dual enrollment classes provided by LMC on Tuesdays and Thursdays for about an hour after school. AHS PTSA is currently selling Golden State Warriors tickets versus the Sacramento Kings to raise money for some of our scholarship fund and the senior all-night party. The game is on November 27th. I will be singing the National Anthem at the game, so please tune in and support. Tickets are $95 and can be purchased by calling 209-248-0490. This week is a bye week for our football team, so in support of one of our very own, a few staff members, including our principal, Mr. Rocha, will be flying out to Alabama to support Najee Harris, as he will be playing in the Alabama versus Ole Miss University game on Saturday. Thank you, have a great evening, and go Panthers.
Next.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education, members of the community. My name is Akuna Eka, and I am here representing Dozier-Libby Medical High School. Students at Dozier-Libby are currently getting ready for the festivities in October. In October, there will be events such as the annual Fall Fest and Spirit Week in an effort to help relieve the stress of seniors preparing to apply to colleges, as well as the opportunity to become more active in school spirit. At this time, preparations are being made by leadership to raise awareness for breast cancer. Seeing as October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, there will be an activity at lunch in honor of survivors and those struggling with breast cancer that will be determined by leadership within the next two weeks. On Tuesday, September 12th, Mr. Bergerhouse took 23 students from Dozier-Libby Deer Valley High's HBCU College Fair. We had several students get accepted on the spot to particular colleges. Dozier-Libby students also were offered a total scholarship amount of $59,500 in scholarships. Several students also attended the AUSD College Fair that held on September 6th at Antioch High School. We are looking forward to our grade-level assemblies, where we get our A-through-G completion buttons for our lanyards and ID cards. Mr. Bergerhouse and the other high principals are hoping to represent and present at the Linked Learning Convention in Anaheim, Burei. They are hoping to be able to present on the pathway and linked learning development in the Antioch Unified School District. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, you're free to stay or to go home. I wonder which you'll choose. That brings us to public comments. Appears we have three. Our first speaker is Melody Manning, followed by Deb Hubbard.
Hello. Is it okay to start? Okay. Good evening. I'm Melody Manning. I work at Antioch Middle School, and I'm just here because I wanted to talk to you guys or just bring up the incident where we had a heat, and our air conditioning unit would not support our classrooms. So, particularly in my classroom, we were at 80 degrees on a low day in the classroom. Windows don't open, kids were having headaches, passing out. In the yard, we actually had to have ambulance come to the school, and I feel like this is a very, very big issue. I want to bring it to your attention because it needs to be fixed in order for our students to be successful as a learning environment. That's it. Thank you.
Please be with me, I just noticed that these are two staff members, so we're a little bit out of order, but I think that's okay. Deb?
Got to watch that clock, I know you're fast on it. So, good evening, Board members. I am Deb Hubbard, and I've taught at Antioch Middle School. This is my 11th year, and I am here with some legalites from AMS. Really want to start by saying shame on me, and I say that in all sincerity. I hope past students can forgive me, because this adds me. I waited till the 11th year to bring this to your attention. And three people in this room know that there is a problem with the HVAC system at AMS, particularly the 100 and 200 building. Ms. Anello, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Cannon, all principals in the last 10 years, and they know, and they brought it up, and every time, you know, we bring it up at the union, you have five days by the contract to mitigate or address the problem. And sure enough, we come through with a Band-Aid fix, and the changes, and we continue on, and we continue to teach. But Ms. Manning is right. This year, this year, we were so proud to host a meeting the week before school started for five teachers. We trained myself, Dave Neal, and Becky Barnett, trained 45 of our colleagues in restorative practice so that they could have community circles and build that restorative, that vital work. And we were so proud to host that, and we knew it would be hot, so we asked for the air conditioning to be turned on 24 hours in advance, which it was. The day the seminar began, at 8:00 in the morning, it was cooler outside the building than in my room, 222. And can't open the windows, because since the remodel four or five years ago, we now have stationary windows, they're double painted, and you cannot open them. You can't even get a breeze, so there's no way to get air in those classrooms. It was terrible. I went out last winter and bought, bought out my Home Depot like six thermometers so that we could tell the temperature in the classroom. So, when we say it's 80, we know it's 80, okay? This, this past August, I'm looking for the date, Monday, August 28th, I had teachers complaining about the lab air condition temperatures were 80 degrees and higher. At 8, sorry, at 12:00 noon, Room 204 was 85 degrees with kids trying to teach. That's unbearable. At 11:48, as the site union rep, I wrote an email to Lindsay Leno, our current principal, and the five days began, right? Within an hour, I did receive an email that said a work order had been submitted, but sadly, that was too late, because the following day on Tuesday, the second day of your five-day clock, we did have, on August 29th, about 12:30, two of our students fell ill, and they were taken by ambulance to local ERs, if you don't know about that. One student suffered a heat stroke, and the other had a condition which the ER doctor said was heat-exasperated. That student, the second student, was in the classroom next to mine, we share an interior wall. It took two ambulances, right, or four suits from district, were in my principal's office within a few hours trying to figure out what to do. That was nice, because, you know, that was the week that it was 114 degrees, we hit high records. All our classes were displaced. You've got to fix this. Please don't feel the shame. Please fix this this year. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Next speaker is Julia.
Good evening, members of the Board and members of the community. My name is Julia Emegoke. I'm the mother of two young children attending Antioch School District. I would like to request the presence of more psychologists, sociologists, psychiatrists, classroom aides, more programs of social, moral, and psychological content added to the academic program, as well as more recesses, expanded school hours from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. The reason why I request these items is for the school districts to always see the students as human beings, not as criminals. It is true that children, as they develop, make mistakes. We all make mistakes. They will fight, they may curse, they may disrespect other students or school personnel. This is when we realize that a child, upon entering a school, is not a perfect, biologically developed and already master of life experiences. Therefore, the school districts must be tolerant and compassionate, give more opportunity to students, and never expel them or suspend them. Simply, they need to get extra psychological, moral, should help as they overcome hormonal disruptions of puberty, or the reality of perhaps coming from a young child whose mother might have been five, or 12, or 18 at conception, and so forth. You and the, therefore, dear members of the Board, you and the school principals, need to always remember that society has already paid for the education of each child. If someone who loved you had promised to buy you a car, and will have already paid a car for you, and will make the monthly payments, and will tell you, "I will buy you a house when you finish high school, and when you turn 18, you will have this and that," this will already be paid, regardless of what you do. But, when you show up to the car dealership, you happen to wake up with a bad emotional stability, or something didn't go wrong, and you misbehave at the dealership, where the dealership tell you, "Hey, we cannot give you your car, that's already been paid, sorry, you're going to be punished," or so forth. No, we cannot do the same with the students. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Velma Wilson.
Good evening. I just want to say a couple of things. First, I want to thank Diane Gibson-Grey, Board President, Walter Rulick, and Superintendent Stephanie Anello, and so many of you that attended last, the Mary Allen Fellow Awards Dinner. I really truly appreciate the love and support that was in that room, but I am a little disappointed that public funds was paid for a ticket that was brushed off for one of our board members who didn't show up for whatever reason. And I think we have to be clear when we're talking about the use of district funds for events, meetings, that cost money, when we talk about other things that the district is trying to get funded and paid for. We just heard a school talk about the HVAC system. So, every dollar that is spent, we shouldn't blow it and be callous like it's nothing, because it's not coming out of your personal pocket, but it really truly is coming out of the pocket of district, which in turn rolls back to all the families and people that pay in to make us who we are, Antioch Unified School District. So, yes, Crystal Sawyer White, I am very disappointed that you did not attend this dinner after saying that you would. Our teachers need collaborative support. Our educators need collaborative support. I do want to thank every last one of you that came and poured in your love to celebrate all the teachers, the honorees, the finalists that were honored on Tuesday, the 19th. Also, I wanted to say thank you to those that have been reaching out to me in behalf of Jason and his family. The services are on Friday, and are still looking to want to help and support. I am definitely doing the repass and trying to make sure that goes forth for the family, so you can definitely reach out to me in that manner. But thank you, this is, the district has been hit with some blows lately, and we need to help on each other and be collaborative and be cohesive, and stop with all the business, all the negativity, and stop with the bashing, and remember, life is just too short. God bless.
I just wanted to say that I work in Fairfield Unified School District, and we had an emergency planned event.
That brings us to item number eight, district reports. We have none. We had a public hearing on sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. I'd like to ask staff to make an introduction. I believe that'll be Mr. Cannon.
Correct.
Good evening, Board. We have conducted a narrow out to all of our site principals, trying to ensure that we do have enough instructional materials for all our staff members, and I'd like to tell you that that was successful, that we did find that we have those materials ready to go. And we are looking forward to reports back from the county office on our Williams visit, where we, we expect to have a clean bill of health with maybe a few issues here and there based on facilities and a couple ancillary materials. But we're looking forward to having a good report, and at this time, we do have our textbooks in sufficient numbers at each of our sites.
Thank you. Anyone would like to speak to this matter, please come forward and do so now.
Thank you very much for listening to me and the community. I am confident of teachers' knowledge and ability to teach. I don't question the fact that every teacher knows from heart all the contents and all the pages of the books. My request is that we should give all the complete power to the teacher to create their own programs, their own books for each class, and not allow external forces such as Walmart or someone overseas to create the program. We need a shorter, simple, very engaging and fun type of program for the students, something that is developly, developly academic for the children. Many times, as I help my children, I've noticed that the content of the books is overwhelming. It is stressing. I do not understand how these young, developing children go through book after book and so many tests, and so much class material, to the point that because so much academic material needs to be covered, they cannot give or be given recesses time, and it is important for children, developing children, to have more recesses time. So, if we're going to be too busy in making the students master and go through all, every page of the book, I don't, I think, and I believe, that we're missing the point of giving a good quality education. The teacher knows the students. The teacher should be given the power and the authority, the right, to be respected, to create his or her own program for the students. And these programs should be small, to the point that it should have like a 20-minute lecture, followed by a 10-minute recess for the students to socialize. These days, most, more and more children are becoming overweight and obese, because they are just sitting down, trying to get through the books and do the class assignments and homeworks, which is, for their age, it is not appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. If no one else is coming, I would like to close the public hearing. Closed. That moves us to public presentations, item number 10 on the agenda. We have none. Item number 11, consent items. Yes, please.
Mr. President, there is a revision to item W and X on the certificated human resource reports.
Does any trustee wish to pull an item for discussion or question?
I wish to pull C, please, present, as present. C is in cat, please.
So, we have W and X for revisions, and C for discussion?
So, I submitted a number of questions for email responses, and so, I thought I printed a follow-along document for that. I know you responded, but I just want to go and make sure. Maybe I didn't bring it with me. So, I did.
You only proceed with, should I go with C? Should I just proceed with C when she's?
Yeah, please, yeah, good idea.
Yeah, I'll just proceed with C, please. I was wondering if we had another bid in regards to this approval of this contract.
Mr. Gangler, can you address that?
We didn't need to pursue a bid. We defer to the state law, which requires us, I believe it's $88,500. It requires us to reach out for a bid. We work with our current vendor, who has a distinct knowledge of our environment and can provide the best service and implementation of this application for us.
So, thank you for responding to the questions, and then I would say, item, I think I had a question about the upgrades, 11C, D, F, and Y. So, Superintendent Anello did respond to the questions regarding the PO for ARI, so thank you for that. And then you responded to the question regarding the posters and the advertising, so thank you. So, I guess, my only question is, thank you for the full responses in reference to number, tried to put these in numbers, so I wouldn't have to go through this. I would say it would be Office 365, the implementation, and the upgrade to SOPUS, the antivirus. So, that's mainly for cloud, correct? Or is it going to also be placed throughout the district on all of our computer systems throughout?
Is that regarding SOPUS, or, yes?
Regarding SOPUS, okay.
We actually are a current customer, we're just moving to their cloud platform.
Okay, great. Now, the other question was, my concern is that we've always had some, Superintendent Anello can respond to this, we've always had issues with technology and not having really the capacity to meet the needs of our district for, for staff and for students. And so, I understand that once eSchool is removed, we'll have enough space?
We will, we'll get back more resources, because ARI's is a cloud implementation, so we didn't have to put forth any resources to run that. We're currently running eSchool just to provide mandated CalPads reporting and to facilitate data transfer into ARI's.
Right, and one of the things I was concerned about was server capacity, and she responded, but I still have a question of how we're doing, because I understand we're running out, and I want to know what the, what we're doing for compatibility, and what we're going to do to make sure that as a, as a district, business-wise, we can stay functional, because if we, obviously, I don't have to explain to you what happens if you, I don't need to go through that, you know what that is. So, can you just talk up to a little bit about that, what the, what we're going to do, or is there a plan in place?
I'm currently working with Assistant Superintendent Santa Maria on facilitating a plan to move forward. We are looking for proposals as we speak to upgrade our systems and to provide more storage and server resources, which we hope to be presenting to the Board in the near future, and we can answer any questions related to that on that presentation.
Okay, because I know we set aside funds, and I just want to make sure that we're implementing so there's no interruption in staff's daily work, there's no interruption for teachers regarding anything that they need, and obviously, for admin services. I know previously, we had a problem with trying to update our phones. I know previously we had a problem with trying to update our phones system, and we didn't have the capacity to do any of that. So we're, we've kinda, I'm hoping we've kinda moved beyond.
Yeah, we're, we're making significant progress as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. I'll look forward to the report.
Anything else we haven't covered?
And I think under, I'm just gonna go make a comment on F and G as far as the change orders are concerned. I understand that, you know, some of the changes are out of our control, but I'm gonna sound like a broken record in saying, I'm hoping that we can fund everything that we're supposed to fund to keep any, you know, to make sure that any unified, that we complete our contract in terms of what we promised the community. I just get concerned that with all of the change orders and the extra money that we're spending and the unforeseen conditions, it just bothers me that we are spending more money than we anticipated, especially with the change orders, the unforeseen conditions. So...
We share your concerns. It's a topic of conversation we're often discussing in cabinet and with our, with our facilities director. And we're watching every penny to make sure that as these changes occur, we still have enough left over to do what's essential in the classroom.
Thank you.
If nothing else, does anyone wish, wish to make a motion with W and X as revisions?
So move.
Motion's made by Trustee Gibson Gray. Do I have a second?
I'm gonna second that.
And a second by Trustee Vinsone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero with Trustee Heck in the present. That brings us to item number 12, action items. Public announcement of intent to reappoint by board to the Personnel Commission. Do we have a staff member?
Ms. Romeo will address that.
In the history of that?
I will. The term of the current Board of Education's appointee to the Personnel Commission, Ms. Rocha, will expire on, at noon on December 2nd. Outlined in the commission is the procedure that we would go through to either reappoint or and actually, either reappoint and actually recruit in case there are other individuals out there who would like to apply. We did recruit in accordance with all of the rules and regulations of the Personnel Commission. And we had one applicant, and we're here tonight. We have to give notice to the community that this is the candidate that we would be bringing forward. And at the next board meeting would then be an opportunity for a public hearing on that appointment, as well as a vote of the board as well. So what I'm recommending that, in accordance with Personnel Commission Rule 20.1.2, that we have the opportunity to reappoint or give notice that reappointment of Mary Rocha fulfilled the term for the board-appointed commission.
Excuse me, so we did not have any other applicants?
No, we did not.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, I move that we postpone to give opportunity for more applicants.
Well, under the Personnel Commission, let me talk about that a little bit, because there are timelines in the commission. And if we are unable to come to an agreement on a, a appointee, then the, we've already done our recruitment. So the next step would be if there's no appointment, we could, we, it could go to the state, Mr. Torleksen, to appoint somebody under the commission. And let me read that out to you. "In the event that a vacancy would otherwise exist on the Personnel Commission, as of December 1st, because of the failure of the board to take action on a new appointment, the board's prior appointee may continue in office and to function as a member of the district's Personnel Commission until a successor is appointed, but not for more than 90 days. If the reason for a lack of appointment is an inability to agree upon an appointee, the appointee shall be made by the Superintendent of Public Instruction within 30 days." And what the, what they look at for a reappointment is whether or not the current commissioner has been known to adhere to the principles of the merit system. That means that they have clearly demonstrated through meeting attendance and actions that he or she does in fact support the merit system and its operations. That's what they're going to look at.
Okay, well, I'm just moving to propose it to the next board meeting for, to give other opportunities.
Well, we would move it, but the recruitment is closed. It wouldn't go back out for new applicants. That's what I'm saying. We've already... I don't believe we can, but let me bring up Ms. Sifford, who is our Personnel Director, and let her answer that. If you know.
Well, it's, it's based on ed code. So you actually have... We posted it. We've met all the legal requirements per ed code. We put it out for the timelines. And so the, what the rule explains is exactly what she said. If by December 1st, you're unable to come up with agreement on that, then it will go to the State Superintendent of Public Schools and Education in order to make the appointment itself.
So you're saying it can be reopened?
Not at this time, according to what we have here.
Okay.
I will say...
If you have any...
I will say that it's not unusual for any of these kind of appointments to have rather scant
Exactly.
Public. I was on the, I was Antioch Library, the representative of the county library, for 14 years. For about five years, I tried to get somebody to replace me and couldn't.
And it's a, it's a good role. I mean, it's serving and supporting our classified employees in the district and can really make a difference and so forth. And so if I can just add a, a comment to what Ms. Romeo was indicating on the criteria that the state uses, is the attendance portion. And the person that's up before you tonight has attended every single Personnel Commission on record and has voted and participated and have been engaged in all of the meetings supporting the board, since they're the board appointee. So if I can just add that. Any other questions?
I'd like to comment.
Yes.
So we have a candidate who is qualified.
Correct.
Who applied.
Correct.
And there's no other candidates, and we can't reopen. I would be embarrassed if we have to go to the state to appoint. We have a qualified candidate in front of us, so I move that we appoint.
Did you move, did you make a motion?
No, she said I want to. She said, she did not make it in a motion form, unless I'm mistaken.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? I will make a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
All those opposed?
I'm not, I don't believe you can abstain unless there's a conflict of interest. Yeah, the public elects you in order to vote.
You would have to say it on the record what the conflict is.
Would you like to change your vote to?
So I am actually going to recommend then that this be actually placed on the agenda for the next meeting. Because if I, I can't abstain, I'm, I'm not going to go into details about that. So that's my recommendation.
We've got a motion and a second, so we need yays or nays for abstentions?
So we need a yea or a nay?
Yes for me. A yes for me.
Yes. Yes for me.
Okay, nay.
Nay.
And for the record, the next meeting, I will not be here. So it would have to be pushed further down the road, and it looks like Superintendent Torleksen will be doing the appointment.
So that's why I ask, are we sure that we cannot extend this? Are you sure that it cannot go to another?
I will look whether or not we can extend it to the meeting when Ms. Gibson Gray is back. And if it can't, then we'll send it up to the state to...
And it doesn't change the applicant pool?
It doesn't change. It will not change the applicant pool. It will not change the one person who did apply and who is qualified for the position. That will not change.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number 13 for discussion by the board. Item A, discussion on board policies 4111 and 9240. Brought forward by Trustee Sawyer White and Vinsone.
Okay. Yes, I compared again the policies from GAMET and then the policies from Antioch Unified School District. Forty, 41, 4111, which is recruitment and selection. And I wanted this to be on the agenda. I think there was a misunderstanding that this is on discussion for the board. This looks like there's been some revisions without the board approval as well. So I'd like to request that for this to be on.
This board policy was brought forward to the board for a first reading and a second reading with approval. So the board policy was approved by this board.
Okay, well, you weren't here last board meeting, and Deborah and myself, we received the GAMET password for personnel and all the other policies. And they're not in line. We voted before we received our password. So this has to be put back on the agenda.
The GAMET is a clearinghouse for district administrators. It is not our policies. It's for us to look at sample policies for CSBA.
That's not my understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's why we need this...
You've adopted these policies, I think is the short of it.
Okay, so that's...
I just wanna make it clear, 'cause you said it hadn't been board-approved. This did come forward to the board for a first reading and a second reading, and it was board-approved by this board.
Before, but these revised before we were able to even vote on it.
The revision itself was approved by this board. This revision was approved. I don't know the circumstances of whether or not you had seen the policy, but it was in your board packet and it was approved.
I didn't get a chance to, because I didn't have a login to GAMET for personnel policies. So my request is again to request a school, I mean, I'm sorry, a study session on these policies. Because I, I feel again, there are a couple, quite, I'm following seven to eight policies that aren't in line with the California School Association.
Can I clarify something? These are our policies. The California School Boards are not our policies. This is what we approve and we abide by by, if a policy gets, you want a policy revised, that's a different step and it's a different structure. Going to CSBA does not help at all, because unless you look at these, this, CSBA is not ours.
So actually, I'm, I'm going to make a comment and say that Ms. Romeo is right, if I'm saying your name right. And that those policies did come back to the board, and they, they came in draft form. But one of the issues with the 9,000-series policies and some of the other policies is the policies are new. And there should have been more of an extensive board discussion on some of the newer policies. And I did make a comment that I didn't feel comfortable with voting on the draft polit, looking at the policies and voting them through, because we had not reviewed them. Now, I did actually request a copy of all of the policies that were given to this board. Now, somebody did look at those policies. Somebody did acknowledge and review them. Somebody did acknowledge that some of those policies were new. But the newer policies were not brought to the board's attention. So it is the governing board's responsibility to actually put those policies in place so that those policies can be abided by. And it's been noted by more than one person, that is rather curious, that at the time that those policies were rushed through, how some of those 9,000-series policies were used. So I think that a study session is not out of order for the 9,000-series policies. So we can actually go through and review unless there were board members that had access to the policies and did have a chance to review them and did have a chance to make corrections. To this day, I don't know who made the corrections on all of the 9,000-series policies that were new, that were never discussed by the board. So just a question, just to look at it, just to see who did it. It's not so much an accusation, but if this board is gonna abide by those policies, then this board needs to review those policies as a group to see what the content of those policies are and what they mean. We have to understand what those policies mean if we are going to abide by them. And I, I actually don't think that's asking for a lot. Doesn't necessarily mean that we would change them, but I'd like to compare with the notes that I have, with, with what I received, and then look at the changes and see where the changes are. There are some inconsistencies. And I take full responsibility of saying, I, I did. I used blind trust in accepting those policies and voting to put them through, because I did not want to hold up the business of the district over policies. But we should have had more than two weeks to review the policies, especially anything that was new and especially anything that requires revision. Now, in terms of what Trustee Gibson Gray is saying, yeah, CSBA is the standard. I call the CDE, and even they refer to CSBA. So they are sort of the gold standard in terms of policies. And CDE is obviously the standard for ed code and government code. So we are, she's right. We're responsible for the policies and we're responsible to look at them. So once again, I take full responsibility for, for having blind trust, to, to assume that the policies weren't changed much. But we didn't have quite a few of these policies in place. And so I think that's kinda what Trustee Sawyer White is asking for.
Yes, I am in agreement with that. In addition to when I was first elected, I only received the binder of 9,000. I, I never received the Personnel binder. I just, again, I'm blind trust. I thought it, we should abide by Antioch Unified School District's website that was on the page. So, and again, I received this 9,000, and then it wasn't in line when I received my password with, with GAMET. So here's an example. For 9240 board development, that wasn't even part of Antioch Unified School District, the GAMET board training specifies the governance training, which I've been advocating for since August. It specifies the courses in here, annual education conferences. This was all deleted. We only have two pages on the Antioch 9240. And then California School Board Association has four pages. So this is just to, to confirm that governance training is a need, not just with California School Board Association, but in order, as President Rulick emphasized, like, I don't know, maybe two months ago, in order to be president of the Pittsburgh Unified School District, you need governance training. And they specify all the courses in this particular policy.
And so actually, regarding board policy 9240, we did spend some time, we talked at length, in which I brought the grand jury report that outlined all the school districts and the, the policy that they're, that, but they put in place. But I think what, what, and we did put that in, so we did have that in place, at which point we agreed on a dollar amount, which I've been told by several districts and other places that, that may be inappropriate to list out in the, the board policy. But that was a starting point for the district, because we didn't have anything in place. And so there are some differences in the policies. I know this, this looks like something that we actually was going to look at, but there's some other policies in there that we didn't have that has changed immensely. And I don't know how the decisions were made, what language would go into those policies for the board, or who decided what to delete, what to include, what not to include. So I think that's the question, and that's rather curious. And I think as a board, we just, we should at least take the time to look at it to make sure that we're in agreement with all of the 9,000-series policies that were voted in. And that's the request. So I don't know if anyone else is interested or anyone cares, but it is up...
Okay, so the way it works, I've, this is my third term, hasn't changed. Resolutions for first reading. We as board members have the opportunity to bring forth concerns, discuss actions to correct them. Then they come back for second reading and possibly actions. Some come back for media. It depends on what we talk about. There is no conspiracy theory. Board members are not working on these in the background. That is what we have paid staff for. There is no conspiracy theory. Board members are not working on these in the background. That is what we have paid staff for. We don't write board policies, we approve them. So if you're not liking, for example, we have a couple up today, and if you don't like what's in the language, and they are for, you can, you can say, for example, even though it's immediate action for provisional internships, no, that's not a board resolution. But you can make changes at that point. To go back and rewrite everyone because it doesn't match the CSBA does not make any sense to me. And that's, that's my opinion.
I can answer who revised these. This board directed staff to revise them. That is what we did.
And then we have the opportunity to say, no, we like this.
When did the board direct staff?
Correct.
I must have missed that.
It was quite some time ago when they talked about the policies being out of date, that they were from nineteen seventy-eight.
And we're always revising them. It's an ongoing thing.
But some of the policies didn't exist.
So here's what I'm, yeah, here's what I'm going to say. So you're saying that the staff wrote the policies on, for the board?
No, I'm not. I'm saying the board directed staff, that would be me, to revise the policies to align with CSBA as much as possible and with practice. I then direct my staff to work with CSBA, who spent three days here. How it works is they have a clearinghouse full of CSBA policies through the GAMIT. GAMIT is just a place to access. You have choices in those policies. What most, you can have this in your policy or this. Both of them align with ed code. Which one aligns to your practice? We then, excuse me, I lose my voice here today. We then presented them as CSBA recommended. We do, we brought all of the new policies forward to the board. We gave you a link prior to giving you your board packet, so this board had over three weeks to review the policy. It came for first read. There were no suggestions by this board. Came for second read and it was adopted, so.
When was the link given?
The link, I can get that date for you.
Because I, I prob, I don't think I would have missed the link being given, but, so I think that this board needs to take a review, take a look at the policies and make sure they're in line with how this board wants to be governed. So I understand the staff took a look at them, but it should really have come back to the board for full discussion. And I understand we had the two weeks for the draft, but if I remember, the policy, we started updating the policies in October. Or I'll have to go back to some original emails of when we were requested to, when it was requested to update the policies. So I just want to make sure that things are in order, that, that the policies aren't, I just want to make sure that the policies aren't counterproductive to what the board's responsibility and goals are for governing this district. And I want to make sure that those policies are in line. And we can always bring a CSBA rep here to talk about governance, board roles. And I understand people want the helicopter view. I get it. I work, so I don't have a problem with that. But I do need, we do need to have policies that are effective and that allows this board to get the business of the community done. So, so that's, that's it. It isn't, it's just, I have the handwritten notes. I have where the changes were made. I have, I don't have who did it, but I do have all of the documentation. And some of that should have come back to the board for review. So I just think that if we want to take each policy one by one, put them on the agenda, look, I'll actually, I'm going to do some legwork and do it myself and start submitting and looking at it and see what the recommendations were, see what the drafts were that we received, and then compare to what was recommended and what was ended up with, especially with the policies that we never had in the district. So I will take on the responsibility of doing that, but I just think that can be, can be quite looking for the word. I want to be careful. We just have to be mindful of what's in those policies by detail. We have to be careful about that. Because you don't want policies to be inadvertently used for the wrong reason. And some people have that impression that how the policies were done, they were, they were rushed in for a specific reason.
We can provide documentation to the board that that is CSBA's recommendation.
Right, I understand, but I'm just telling you what, what, you know, in terms of the perception, that's all.
I just want to clarify that, if the board would like that.
Okay, and I would like to maybe make it a little less strenuous on staff. If you have some that you don't like, I suggest you talk to Stephanie or Walter, first name, sorry, I apologize. And then those, you can have a discussion, then bring it back. I don't want to bring back every single resolution that we've already voted on. It went through, you know, first reading, second reading, and action. We should only be looking at the ones that you have concerns with. Other than that, these are good to go, just the ones you have concern with. Identify and deal with those.
I would also. I would agree with that. I can certainly live with that. But what I don't want to do is, you know, every time we get a new trustee, well, I wasn't here when this was.
Crap.
It'll be, it'll be an endless nightmare, so, but.
No, there has to be a valid reason to bring it back.
If we can start some rationale for, you know, one or two or three of these, I'll gladly look at them.
The other caution I would give the trustees as you look at them, many of the personnel policies have to be aligned with our collective bargaining agreements so that if you have questions, please give me a call because they were specifically tailored so that we are meeting all of our obligations with our employee groups.
And so let me go on record to say that we're looking at the nine thousand series, the governing board policies, and so that's what we're looking at. And all the ed code, governing codes under that, and if there are any associated personnel policies, then Ms. Anello will be.
Well, one of the ones that Ms. Sawyer White brought up is forty-one eleven, which is a personnel.
Right, but it depends on, it's a, yeah, but part, part of what happens is I will look at some of those depending on how they were used and for what purpose. Because I am concerned. I am concerned with how they were used and the understanding behind that. And I think maybe is, I think if I'm not correct, it is a policy for employees, but I am concerned with how it was used. So I'll bring that up with Ms. Anello, just go from there, but I just wanted, just wanted to alert you that there are some inconsistencies and.
Happy to answer any questions or provide clarification at any time.
And I hear you. We don't want to go over every single one, but I think it behooves, beginning with me, to pay attention to the policies and, you know, not to just use blind trust and assume that everything is done up to par. I take full responsibility for that, so I'll go on record to say that.
Okay, and the reason why, sorry, Ms. White, I wanted to address that, the title is recruitment and selection. So I just want us to still be transparent in reference to recruitment. Is there teaching more than one subject, you know, emergency credential situations? And I'm aware there's a teacher shortage, but just wanted to be more familiar of the recruitment policies.
And I understand that, but we did go through a full audit this year, and every teacher who's teaching in our district has the appropriate authorization to be teaching the class that they're teaching.
And I would be happy at any time to sit down with you and Ms. Romeo and go over the selection and criteria process. And then if you have questions, we could answer that. And then if you still had questions or wanted to make revisions to policy, you could bring it back, some suggestions.
And I'm going to say, teaching, teacher credentialing do have public records, so, I mean, it's not, you know, if people are up to date, you can always research that for yourself. So I'll have that info and I'm happy to sit with her on that.
At a time on this then. All right, number two, California dashboard, trustee Sawyer White.
Yes, this is in reference to also this conference, the national, I'm sorry, what was this? This homeless.
No, we're on the second item.
No, this is why it's a reference, because the data we have in here for Antioch Unified School District, homeless students population, it says NA. So I just wanted to know, are we going to update that? Are we going to?
What are you looking at?
California school, I don't have it in front of me.
That is data that would have been uploaded.
I looked at it like a couple of days ago.
Yes, and I'm sure it'll be updated. They just released today that CAPS scores have actually been embargoed, which will also affect this in some sense. Mr. Cannon, did you want to, not to put you on the spot, did you want to add anything to this? Is this a, are you looking at?
Yeah, the data for the California school dashboard.
I can look into it for you.
But if we can.
What are we missing on the dashboard?
Well, we haven't had a presentation.
Oh.
Are you talking about our state scores on testing or are you talking about a specific subgroup?
Because there's a request to attend a conference on the homeless student youth.
I can certainly look into that further if that's the direction. I don't have any information on that.
Their data, but we can look into it and get back to you.
I know that in student services, we do have, we do have personnel that do take care of our homeless students and make sure we monitor, you know, to comply with state and federal laws on that. So that might be something we can work with Mr. Sanchez as well, if that's a part of it.
And how the state is uploading their data, I'm not sure right now, but I can find out for you.
Okay, that'd be great. And also the foster youth as well?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So these are questions that's going to come back in a Friday report, an agenda item.
Right.
Clarification.
Have we, I'm sorry, did, have we answered number three or just kind of touched on it or?
Let's just know that.
So actually, there's a, I'm sorry, is, are we attending the conference? I'm confused.
Did you say there was a vote on that?
Yes, there was a vote last week. The county office of education asked us to send our homeless liaison. We have a homeless liaison. And this board approved her attendance at the last meeting.
Okay, number four, child nutrition programs.
No, I was just wondering who, were any other board trustee attending, who's attending the conference? You said no. Yes, okay. Yes, I've been researching. We had a parent inquire, which, about the nutrition, child nutrition program. And I looked this up on the internet. If you, Joe, could you go to revolutionfoods.com? And they have a, we can get a grant through the state.
Nice.
Almost seventy million dollars. San Francisco Unified School District is doing this. If you could go to, if you could find the menu, I'm sorry. Maybe it's about, I can read it off until he finds, yeah. Okay, so it has healthy foods. For example, right now, my son's in the district, and we have like turkey gravy and mashed potatoes in a roll. Cheese, bread, I'm sorry, French bread cheese, cheese pizza. But they have, which is less expensive, turkey sandwiches, turkey pasta, Alfredo, this is for breakfast, and chicken assolata, fruits and vegetables. I know we have a salad bar, that's what my son has shared with me. And the breakfast menu is blueberry muffins, cereal, bagels, sandwiches, waffles and syrup, bagels and cream. And they're offering also, if you have an after-school program, to offer like a dinner. So I wanted to share that with the board, since some parents have been asking for healthier meals. Oh, there it is, right there, okay. And it's affordable. So I would like to, as possible, you can investigate a little further and maybe you can address how much you were spending. I think, Teresa, we discussed how much you were spending for the child nutrition program in comparison to offering something healthy.
So. And I want to just make a comment. Are we still doing California Thursdays?
Are we doing what?
Weren't we doing the California Thursdays where they had the fresh meal choice? Anybody remember that? Where they go into on Thursdays, they'd have the fresh meals, they'd have different veggies. And I have pictures where, you know, I visited the school sites and they had, have you heard of California Thursdays? We were doing it at one point. Okay, let me, let me look at that out, but we were doing that in some of our schools.
Would it be helpful for the board to find out what our current nutrition program is? Or is that something the whole board wants or something, maybe I can sit down with Ms. Sawyer White first and discuss kind of what our guidelines are, which come from the state?
Yeah, we were doing California Thursdays. If you, we had, I remember Belshaw and, I'm trying to remember, some of our schools that, some of our elementary schools participated where they would get a full choice. Maybe the director, would, the director of nutrition would know. You could check with her and see if we're still doing that.
I would just like to say, because you're new, Crystal, these are things that you can send an email to the superintendent. She would then research them and bring them, and then bring them to the board or supply answers to all of us. Because these aren't board governance questions until she has an idea of what she should recommend. So all of these items could have gone in an email to the superintendent and then the information would have flowed back. Versus being on agenda where we're talking about things and they don't, they don't have the answers.
And then there's a school district list. I just want to see if Antioch's on there because we were doing this. We, yeah, we were participating in California Thursdays and I don't know.
Well, you look that up.
Oh, Antioch, there it is. Go, we're listed. I know we were participating, go to school districts. I toured the schools and absolutely, we were in there, we're listed. There we are. So I know we had some healthy food programs. I was really impressed by the choices. But I'd like to know and may see if we're still continuing because we were making a shift for our students to have healthy meals. So I just want to put that out there.
I'd be interested in the Friday report.
A Friday report on our current board, and I'd be happy to sit down with Ms. White as well. But if we give you kind of what our revenue is, what our guidelines are.
Right, and all I'm saying, if a question had gone to you, then it could have come in a Friday report versus, you know, trying to find information on the fly.
Well, I think, I just wanted to present so that you could see what the, what this program was about, that's all.
All right, I'll provide the, and then if you want to contact me and we can sit down with the director of nutrition services, I'd be happy to do that.
Julia, you have a comment?
Thank you, board member Sawyer White, for researching about the health foods. I think you were close to what I've asked and requested on the last meeting. But we should pretty much follow the model of France where every kid loves to go to school because the meals, the breakfast, lunch, dinner meals, and snacks in between are so delicious. That's one of the reasons why they go to school, because the people that work in the kitchen, these are famous chefs. Look, the school, district in France, they employ famous French chefs, right? And they cook everything from scratch, right? Nothing is processed. So the problem that we run again, when the food is processed, is that they will contain too much salt, too much sugar, too much chemicals that will affect their brains and their development. They may make them obese, overweight, and they may affect their mental status, their mental health. Like I said, the more the food is processed, it has more chemical elements. Then even children on special need classes, students with, that are autistics, their brain cells, their neurons, they get more affected by those chemicals. So we need to go and demand for these cooks, the members, the employees that work in the kitchen, to do the effort, to the honest effort to start cooking from scratch. Everything in the kitchen pretty much is there. They have stoves, they have warmers, they have kitchens, they have refrigerators. They must work harder and prepare a healthy food. Thank you very much.
So in the Friday board packet, if we can get an update about how many of our elementary schools are still participating in California Thursdays? And then I know we were going to do something broader with, because it was a full program where they exposed students to new veggies and fruits that they hadn't been exposed to. And so I think I would agree it's something to look at. And I do want to say that I'm also working in a school district and I won't say where, but I will say that kids don't necessarily eat the lunches. Kids have very picky palates, but I do remember on Thursdays, kids were going back for seconds, so I'm just saying.
Also, the reason I wanted to address this publicly is that we, a majority of our students are free lunch students. And if we had healthy lunch programs, maybe that we would have a turnaround academically and they would be more inclined to come to school. And some of them, they do not have meals on the weekend, so they look forward to eating at school.
That's true. Lunch, sometimes breakfast and lunch is the only meal that a student gets, so that is true. I concur. Thank you. That's true.
Okay, if no further discussion, we move to fourteen, resolutions for first reading, none. Item fifteen, resolutions for immediate action, authorizing. Item 15, Resolutions for Immediate Action, Authorizing Provisional Internship Program Permit.
A provisional input intern permit is a permit authorization that allows a teacher in the classroom while they're going through their teacher credentialing program. They do have to meet all subject matter exams prior to getting this internship. So I would ask the board to approve this, this evening.
I'm going to go ahead and move approval.
I don't know if you have a card. I don't know if that's for this one. It just came late.
Oh, she has a card. Okay.
No, that isn't for this item. So we have a motion, Trustee Vincent.
Second.
Second, Trustee Gibson White, Gibson Gray.
Any color will do.
I had it either once, once a meeting.
Gibson orange would be nice.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number B, Resolution 2017, 1811, Authorizing Instructors to Teach Outside of Credential Authorization.
So the education code specifically allows for teachers to teach a subject in addition to what's on their credential. They do have to show that they've mastered that, that subject area in order to get authorization. And this is telling the board that each of these has. We did have a teacher who left unexpectedly due to an illness. And this is allowing the teachers to pick up, five of our teachers to pick up those classes without disruption to our students. So I would ask the board to approve it this evening.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Gibson Gray.
Second.
Second by Trustee Vincent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Item number 16, Resolutions for Second Reading and Actions, None. Item, oh, item 17A, we, Board Policies for First Reading.
I can speak to this one.
Uniform complaint procedures.
The uniform complaint procedure is always being updated to include new areas that could, that are addressed under the uniform complaint. The what's before you today is changed in that it includes a provision for lactating students, which was, was not in our old complaint form.
We have a speaker card, Julia?
Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to request something on behalf of the community. Every, every other country in the world, except the United States, our country, uses school uniforms. The issue of uniforms is a very important matter because it's a matter of identity, unity. It's a question if a student, if the student identifies with the school or if the school identifies with the student. We must make all students wear a uniform because it unifies a school, teacher, and students. It prevents bad experiences between police or business owners and our students. Who will most likely automatically realize that a young child on the streets or inside their businesses is a student who belongs to school rather than seeing a young child as a criminal or a potential shoplifter due to the tight or loose or damaged clothing being worn. In addition, uniforms are a matter of pride. For the students to feel proud of the school they represent and for the school to feel proud of the students representing the school. Finally, I propose that every student wears a white lab coat on top of the regular clothing of choice. They will look like doctors. All you need to add to the uniform is simple programs of health for them to become doctors. As you know, our nation lacks of doctors. I believe that the school district, our school district can make a doctor out of every student. Let's start with the white doctor coat as uniform for all students of Antioch Unified. And I quote that Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
It's actually first reading.
This is first reading. And so this, this is an interesting update. And the only, I'm going to send some emails, but I, I am concerned about, since this is requesting accommodations apparently for high school students and making sure, you know, that we, it looks like we, they've added some things where we have to have nursing stations or the accommodations of such for moms that are breastfeeding. So I, I'd like more information, I'd like actually more information on this and the requirements for high schools to be able to accommodate mothers and, and what, you know, whether or not we'd have to do anything on site to be in compliance with this uniform complaint procedure, you know, the, the first reading of this document. So that would be my concern, the policy, whether or not we have to do anything different as a, a district to accommodate a teen mom on site.
Okay. We move to item number B, First Reading of New Board Policy, Married Pregnant Parenting Students.
Can we go again?
And this is a new policy about non-discrimination of, of pregnant parenting students as required for federal program monitoring and receiving federal funding.
Okay. Item number 18, Board Policies for Second Reading and Action, we have none. Item 19, Information and Anticipation of Future Action. Information, Items for General Information, Item 20, Administrative Regulation 1312-3, Uniform Complaint Procedures. See here, this administrative regulation was revised to reflect the designation of Mike Santos as the district's compliance officer due to the, can't have a whole punch there, something associate superintendent.
Adams.
Adams.
Maybe, yeah.
Educational services position due to the.
Who was the previous compliance officer?
Adam Clark.
Okay.
Okay, Item B, Administrative Regulation 5145.3, Non-Discrimination Harassment.
Again, this is just an informational item for the board this evening and outlines how we're going to go about addressing.
On all three of these policies, you have to name the officer and with Dr. Clark leaving, there has to be somebody in place for the complaints to come to immediately.
Yes.
Okay, so that applies as well to Administrative Regulation 5145, Sexual Harassment.
Correct.
That moves us to future agenda items for board members.
So, so this is for, for general information. So basically, this is, this is really for, he's Title IX rep. So this would mean that any actions that occur on campus between students, is that correct? Or any, any situation? Because I know how it works in other districts with Title IX reps.
He is the Title IX officer for any complaints that would come under Title IX. That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to, to put that out there, but that would be bullying, school climate, any of those issues. Okay.
Future agenda items from board members?
So I actually reviewed the facilities report. And so I, I appreciate the comparison, but I am going to say that I'd like to see the board make a decision about facility use in terms of our concession stands. Because I believe there is an issue with, I believe it's the Wolfpack group, that we, they're not allowing them to, they're not allowed to use the concession stands. And that is how, or the concession area of some of the school sites, wherever they are. And so, and looking at this comparison, I didn't, I didn't really do sort of a detailed comparison. But I think that what makes it so unique in Antioch is we don't have what some of the other facilities have. Like San Ramon has a teen facility. They have different resources in the city that we don't have for many of the families here. And many of the families can't really afford to participate in like Delta Soccer or different things like that where you have, have families coming with snacks and things. So I'm going to say that the board needs to make a decision about concession stand and that we put in, that we really look at having sort of a blanket fee. And then we, we put something in place to allow Wolfpack or any other agency to use the concession stands. Because that is how they make their money and it could be a part of our parent engagement. Many of those parents are, are people from the, within the district, a lot of the students. And I'm going to say we can use this as a tool for declining enrollment. I've gone to one of their events and they have high parent participation. And so I, I think that if we open up our concession stands, we can think about strategically engaging families and being inclusive. And then when we have those organizations and those clubs that don't respect the concession stands rules and that's when we implement, though we have to give people a chance. And I don't feel we're giving them a chance in terms of the concession stands to be able to use them. I think we have to consider that.
So we can't discuss this tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I'll work with the board president to put it as an item for discussion by the board.
Thank you for this. And by the time we have it on, I'll have more research and comparison with some of the other districts. But yeah, I think Antioch is unique in terms of resources and what we're able to give the community. And unfortunately, it falls on the public school to be able to do that.
And although this is supposed to be brief commentary, I would also like to make sure that it's not a gift of public funds. We have to get, recoup our money.
So it'll be an item for discussion at the next board meeting. I'd caution the board in discussing this any further at this meeting.
Exactly.
Item number 22, Additional Comments. How we don't have any of those put forward in the public? Item number 23, Reports from Board Members Relative to Memberships or District Business.
So I'm just going to say that I'm excited about an organization that really wants to help Antioch because they know we have really high ratios of students for free and reduced lunches. And I just found out that I actually have an opportunity to supply some of our teachers with whiteboards and other supplies. Stephanie, I'll follow up with you. But I think it's amazing that other districts participate and do this, buy one, get one free. And then they get to choose another district. So I'm very happy that people are thinking of Antioch in that way and helping our teachers have the resources they need in the classroom. And the other thing too is with the backpacks, I'm very excited about that. And I, you know, will work with you and any free items coming into the district that will save us money and help our teachers, that would be great. The only other thing I'm going to say is that two weeks ago, last week, at the board meeting, there were administrative letters and a censure put in place. And I'm going to go on public record to say that since there is no board policy and no ed code law that allows the board to do that, I will continue to fulfill my duties as a board trustee and continue to communicate with the superintendent and support students and community as I always have. And, you know, I, I hope that we can continue to have a positive and a peaceful dialogue moving forward. But I, I, you know, don't see myself, you know, really kind of changing a whole lot of how I communicate, you know, working with Superintendent Anello. And I will also, I do appreciate all the staff sending invitations and wanting us to be on site as board trustees. And I work hard to do that, but I'm up against a terrible, terrible commute. And I'm going to give you an example. I, I actually had to be in a meeting in Oakland at 7:30 and to zip back around to Emeryville, complete freeway shutdown. So I had to leave early to get here. I had to leave work really early to get here. And I, you can see I barely made it. So I make every effort to be, to respond to requests and to support our principals and teachers when they put their requests out there. And I want to say I appreciate that and look forward to really moving the district into a positive direction.
I just want to say that I appreciate all the hard work from the staff, all these copies that I have to read for each board meeting. I do appreciate that. I know it's a lot of typing and so forth. So I appreciate that. And again, there'll be some musical concerts coming up. My son is playing his second year in clarinet. And so I'm interested in seeing the musical concerts coming up in the Unified School District.
If no other comments, future meetings, October the 11th and October 25th. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.